Microsoft and Apple agree. It being six thirty, we will begin to open this meeting of the Select Board on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
February fifth?
Happy birthday.
Today's February fifth?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. My birthday's up.
Okay.
You've got an early start. Thank you.
Sometimes Facebook likes to change.
You know how government runs?
The roll call of the Select Board.
Oh, fine. Now that you can do it.
Yeah, this is Jake.
Yes.
Yes.
Kathy. Ann says yes?
Yes.
Okay. That's all five of us. That's nice. We will now take public comments on non-agenda items. I don't see any hands in the room. No hands. The chairman's report will come out during the course of the meeting. It's mostly about the school budget.
Shocked.
And then we look at the action items. And does anyone have anything to add or change in the action items? I would like to suggest that in on our parking discussion at our next meeting, we include we adopt a list of streets that are resident only.
And I don't know if you want to add this or not, but the wayfinding task force met. And I don't know if you want this on there. I can just update as we go.
Do you want to report that as part of your liaison activities?
Yes.
Can it be a liaison, regular liaison?
Absolutely.
And then you don't have to reduce the print on this anymore? Any other recommendations?
It's complete for now.
Okay. The first item on our agenda is to interview Crystal Kandakis?
Kandakis.
Kandakis for the Cultural Council. You have your application. And I'd like to hear from you.
Oh, I was just looking for a way to get more involved in the town. I work at the library part-time, so I have a little bit of extra time that I can use to volunteer. And the Cultural Council is just like the obvious choice for me as an artist. I have attended some meetings and I agree with a lot of what they're trying to do. And I think that there's even more that I could bring to the table.
Becky. Just a question about time and having sufficient time to be involved. You've attended some meetings, so you, I guess, have an idea of what the time requirements might be?
I think so, yes. So I am able to attend most of the meetings. What I'm offering is specialization with social media and posting, things like that. So part of that I just do on my own time when I'm free. So that seems like it would work well moving forward.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for stepping up.
Yep.
No, I've put nothing other than thank you for stepping up.
Same. You answered the question I was going to ask, which is, is there a particular focus area? So you've already answered. And thank you very much.
I can only add that it's always gratifying when someone steps up and has skills that are appropriate for the board that they're looking for. Thank you very much.
You're the first published caller I've ever spoken to. So that's great. And I'm glad. That's a skill set that fits in with this particular this particular board very well. You mentioned social media because of your writing skills. Is there some thought in your mind that maybe there's some sort of a program that you might leverage into the Cultural Council's programming activities?
I think first I'd really like to focus on getting the council up to speed in terms of social media and things like that. But I could definitely offer something like that or bring in someone to offer those kinds of services to the community.
It seems like you're uniquely qualified and have the right connections to maybe do something in that area as well. But no question, social media is also pretty important in terms of connecting. So great. Well, thanks for raising your hand.
Is there anyone else who has a comment they'd like to add? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah, I'll take the move that the Select Board appoint Crystal Kandakis to the Cultural Council for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Second.
Meeting ready to vote? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I say yes.
John says yes.
Congratulations, I guess.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay. The next item is the quarterly reviews of the police chief, the fire chief, and the cabinet administrator, in that order. Greg, do you have anything you want to say as an introduction to this?
Well, so you had the report from Chief Fitzgerald. I agree with a lot of what he has outlined there. I think things continue to progress well in the department and through the chief's leadership. And I think we're on good footing. The chief continues to pursue emergency preparedness, not only against training for himself, but also working with the town, but also the broader regional community as well, which I think is a particularly helpful activity for us. So looking ahead, that work will continue. We've been working on the new union contract. We hope to finish that up in the next month or so. We'll have more details on that for you hopefully at your next meeting. And as we gear up for summer, looking at parking enforcement and strategies for that are on the agenda as well. But turn it over to the chief to elaborate some.
No, I mean Greg hit all the highlights. The only other thing that I would want to mention is we're working with Regional Dispatch to finally convert our data. We went through all that the other day and I come up with a sort of a strategic plan of how that's going to look. New mobile data terminals should be here soon for all the vehicles in accordance with Regional Dispatch and State nine-one-one. As Greg said, I'm working on the state's MEMA's Emergency Management Advisory Board, which is basically about fifteen emergency managers from across the state. And our last meeting was the topic of EMPG grants, which is emergency preparedness grants, and how they are going to try and restructure that. So there'll be more to follow on that as we move forward. And then Regional Shelter Project, invite you guys down if you want to come on March sixteenth for the drill, eleven AM to one PM. Should only take a few hours of working with the MRC, the Medical Reserve Corps, and Border Health to set up and break down the local shelter. We're also in the process of working on a regional shelter plan. We've identified Gordon College as possibly a regional location. We have about eight communities, I think, eight or nine communities that are interested in participating with us. And there'll be more to follow on that as well. The last step is to have the Red Cross give me the view of the facility that Gordon College can determine if its actual size and.
Where will you be on March eleventh?
What's what?
Where will you be on March eleventh?
At the high school. March sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Fifteenth at eleven.
At eleven, yeah. And let's see, other than that, the only other big hot ticket item for the department is our accreditation, our reaccreditation is this year. And we're looking at a July date for our mock accreditation where they come in and assess and see where we are. And then an actual accreditation for September timeframe would be avoid sometime around first. And the only other things I have is where we have driver simulator simulator training through MYHA that's coming in April for police, fire, and DVW. Lieutenant McCoy is attending a internal investigation class dealing with internal investigations and the post commission. Sergeant Lou, Lieutenant McCoy and I will be attending an advanced incident command similar to what we had the other day, but it's for managers and executives sometime in April. So other than that, we're just continuing on the march through. And then the next big thing, I guess, with you guys is going to be the parking. We'll be at your next meeting.
Who is developing the plan for the Fourth of July?
We have a meeting coming up March fifth, so it starts with us. And we'll go, we have the fire department, DPW, POCs and rec involved in that. So that's starting all already.
Any other questions?
I have some.
Yes.
I was just looking over, when you were talking about the overtime. And I know the NEMLEC, that will help cover with Fourth of July, but do they not help with regular overtime?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's not a possibility there.
It's just for special events or emergencies.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask about succession planning. Is that?
Underway. Lieutenant McCoy is going to be taking some advanced training. He's currently waitlisted now and possibly it will be the spring or fall of two thousand and twenty-five. He would be the next in line, you know, depending on how things go. I only have two and a half years to go, so I'm hoping we can have the next few people ready to move up, you know, as we move forward.
No, I think everything I've seen speaks for itself. Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Chief, everything's going great. Great job. I especially, along the line of the succession planning, I especially like to see the delegation of responsibilities because that's part of preparing them, right? So I think that's all great. I also wanted to commend you. I know you're looking at, we're going to talk about parking in a couple of weeks. But anytime you can use technology to do a job that no human actually wants to do, that's a win. So kudos. I know we always get a little pushback, you know, from the community on technology, but these are jobs that humans really don't want to do, and that is a very good use of that. I did have a question on the North Shore nine-one-one. I think we're coming up on a year soon.
Yes.
We transitioned roughly in the spring of last year, right? I think it would be helpful to see the metrics, right? We were promised a lot of things. Everything seems to be going great. But I believe it's a board responsibility to review, you know, our strategic supplier relationships, and that's certainly one. It did look to me like they may have changed their website.
Not sure. I haven't looked at it.
So it used to go out when I would, you know, type in the URL, it went out to a specific website for them. Now it's all buried under mass.gov, best I could see. So I didn't see any metrics for like last year. The last report that was published was in two thousand and twenty-one. So I would like to see the two thousand and twenty-two report, because I'm sure they have it. And then when the two thousand and twenty-three one comes out in April, I think roughly, maybe that's a good time for us to have a, you know, some type of board review on, okay, here's what we said we were going to do. How are we doing?
Would you like that added to the?
The actions.
The actions.
I would. That would be a great idea.
I'll see if I get that.
Yeah, the two thousand and twenty-two, they should have it. All right. That'd be great. Thank you.
Better than the data would be a URL, I think.
Well, yeah. I mean, like I said, it looks like they may have been asked to standardize their website, which happens. And I didn't see the two thousand and twenty-two report published out there. So hopefully they can either do that or send it to us. That'd be great. That was it. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll look forward to seeing you next week. I'm really curious about how this parking thing works out. In reading your reports, a lot on emergency management, and I'm kind of pleased to see that. Actually, when it's quiet and you don't really know, the police force is there, that's a good thing. But emergency management, that's when you've got to be front and center. So I'm glad to see that everything's getting trained on there. Question on NEMLEC. You're going to request some resources for this year's Fourth of July celebration. Well, frankly, it's Fourth of July everywhere. You know, I'm just wondering how that works because you're not going to be the only person in line.
Get the request in early. That's the plan.
Okay.
On the fourteenth, they're having a membership meeting, and right after that, the onboarding process is going to start. So as soon as they come in and do a, they'll do an onsite visit here. And once they do that, I'll do the request.
Okay, all right. So there's prioritization based upon first come, first served. All right, that's good. I was just looking at some of the budget numbers, and you're pretty much on budget for most of this stuff. I saw that expenses are running a little bit ahead. Is there some reason for that?
Most of the hot ticket items are July one, so the big expenses.
They were front-loaded?
It's all front-loaded, yeah.
Okay, all right. So it'll slow down as time goes on. It has been, I guess. Well, great. No, I think you're doing, you and your force are doing a very commendable job here in town.
Becky?
I wanted to explain an acronym that John and I used. NEMLEC is short for Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. So if anybody's listening in, they can understand that if they can hear me through my lifesaver. But the other thing, I did want to ask you, just you were talking about the the March sixteenth?
Yep.
And that you'll also be looking for community members to be involved in that? Is that something that will be publicized prior to the March sixteenth, just to?
Probably not, because I just want to see how we lay this out and how it's actually supposed to flow and work. And then after that, we will do that. Years ago, I think we had a CERT team and.
Jake's nodding.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not sure whether, how that got expanded or where that went. But I think it's a, I mean, I think Jake would agree, it's a huge, important thing for us to, you know, to try and rebuild and move forward with.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, while we're expanding on acronyms, CERT?
It's a Community Emergency Management Response Team.
And who would be that team?
Anyone who wants to join, any member of the public.
So it would be run by?
It'd be volunteers. It'd be run by either Jake or I or both of us. And then there would be volunteers that would get the training to help us out in, you know, in an emergency situation.
So would, as part of the forming those teams, I presume there might be some published criteria as to what makes a good CERT member?
MEMA puts on the training and, you know, it's, I think I put it in here, what it does, what they have to do. But it's basically some search and rescue stuff, some emergency medical stuff. And, you know, they could volunteer to help out running the shelter as well.
I guess my question would be, we do have a fair number of snowbirds in town. So would you be looking for people who might be more full-time residents? Or would you also welcome part-time residents?
Welcome anyone at this point, yeah. Anyone that's willing to help.
Any other comments or questions, Greg?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake.
The kind of report we like to get, isn't it?
I know. Thank you.
Next up.
Is that the hot seat?
Ew. Why don't you give us a quick summary of?
Sure. We've been busy, both call volume wise, onboarding the call firefighters. Everything's going extremely well. Actually, today was a prime example at like four o'clock. Our engine went over to Ipswich where they had a second heart fire. And they probably didn't even leave town, and we had a medical. So I brought the ambulance up to a medical. An off-duty firefighter met me there. We went to the hospital. We came back. We had two call firefighters and another off-duty firefighter who came back. So the system is working. Hopefully that will be consistent and we can maintain it. But, you know, that's good to see. It's been a process onboarding everybody. All the guys have done a wonderful job, career guys helping the call guys and vice versa. One of our career firefighters, Shane Stevenson, graduated paramedic school, which is a huge feat. And he just got credentialed by Dr. Krendel recently. And then one of our call firefighters, who's also a paramedic, was credentialed. He's been a paramedic for twenty years, so it was more of a paperwork thing, but he was also credentialed. So we added two paramedics to our roster as of the last two or three weeks. Other staffing updates, our last probationary full-time firefighter will be graduating the academy on February twenty-sixth. That'll bring us up to full complement. We had two firefighters who are out for paternity leave over December and a little bit of January. That's why you'll see a little bit of an uptick in the shift coverage on the overtime because we had one at the academy and then two out of paternity leave. Lieutenant Happel got his fire prevention officer two, and then firefighter Susie got his incident safety officer, which are multi-session programs, and they have to take a certification exam at the end. So that was good to see. Our software is working. We're still working on a few kinks, but all modules are up, operational. The last part of it is community involvement, which you might have seen in the tide this week. And there'll be some other publications coming out. We just didn't want to confuse people with the reverse nine-one-one where we're giving information to the community. This program, Community Connect, is actually where the community gives information to us about their house, emergency contacts, paths, maybe medical needs. And it shows up on our iPads the minute the address gets dispatched from regional. So that will be pushed out. Hopefully, we might even be adding a mailer to the tax bill and water bill, et cetera. So I'm working with town clerk on that. Other than that, I've been working very closely with Chief Fitzgerald. We've been working, I can't say enough about working with the schools for preparedness from other places I've worked. We are like years ahead, both working with Essex Police, Essex DPW, Manchester DPW on a regular basis. You know, God forbid there is an event, we're getting ready, during April vacation, we're going to run a large drill at the school with all the police, fire, DPWs, just to do kind of a mock exercise. Other than that, and then obviously March drill, we're doing the shelter. I think that's about it. Questions?
Becky? What is acting out of grade?
So acting out of grade, if a lieutenant's on vacation, we will bring up a firefighter and they get, they act as a lieutenant. So instead of hiring a lieutenant in overtime, that's senior person, or if somebody's on a list, emotional list, they move up, we call move it up and see, so.
Thank you. And I did notice that your, the overtime was well below the three-year average. And I think we are so fortunate to have you here as part of our town. Thank you very much, chief.
I've got no questions. Just want to restate what Becky said. This is not last year's fire department, and it's a commend you and your team. I think that the face of a community in a lot of cases is public safety, is public safety. And this town has nothing to be embarrassed about. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Same. Yeah, it's night and day. So this is great. I'm really, I especially appreciate the effort put into the call firefighting program. And I'm glad to see it's having some success. We're off to a good start, Greg.
I'm hoping that, you know, as long as the budget stays as where it is currently for next year, to bring, try to get four more.
I was going to ask, are you still?
I think eight would be a good compliment if we can get them. I think after that, then you get to a costs kind of ratio. But if I think we can get four more like before we currently have, I think that'd put us in an excellent position.
That's fantastic. And I also wanted to thank you for the social media postings. I think they've been very successful in communicating to everybody what you do when you're not out on a call, right? You're not sitting around twirling your thumbs, right? You know, you're actively preparing and making sure the equipment's well taken care of, training, all of that stuff. I love seeing that. So thank you very much. Great.
When you call in someone to fill a slot, are you filling four-person shifts or three-person?
So we only fill three-person shifts currently. So contractually, we have to have three firefighters on a shift. Looking forward, one of the things that we, during our interviews with the call firefighters, that was kind of brought up is having them a little bit more involved. So we've been looking at trying to, it'll be easier with the new software, once we get some data in there, to see where our peak times are. If I was to guess, it would be Memorial Day to Labor Day on the weekends, just because, obvious reasons, is maybe bringing in extra help during those days. And again, we've got to look at, you know, where we are financially, and then also get some data to back that up, but not just my guess, so.
Thank you again for putting my Dutch stock out. I notice I'm one of the little hotspots.
I did see that. It was speed pass. See what it was.
Yep.
John?
Yeah, that's good. Chief, I think you've got a well-oiled machine that you've put together here in really fairly short order.
Well, I mean, the guys are awesome. The staff we have is second to none. I think that, you know, it's them we should be thanking, not me. They do an excellent job, day in and day out, so.
Couple of questions on the call firefighters. So how many, how many times so far have you had to call in the firefighter? And I'm not sure how long they've been active.
So they've been kind of cleared to come back probably two weeks, middle of January when they got the, and they're still getting up on the driver, driving and things like that.
Okay. Have you had any incidents where I'm calling for somebody and there's nobody available? Yeah? Is this, you happen to feel that eight is the critical mass, that that will never happen?
I wouldn't say that. The probabilities would be in our favor that it wouldn't happen. You know, we still have, we're still rolling the dice a little bit. We, you know, holidays, you know, weekends, summers, when people go on vacation, things like that, those are the times I worry about because they, they don't have to stay around there. It's only when they're available. So those, and then two of them are full-time firefighters elsewhere, but thankfully they work opposite each other. So they're not on the same, gone at the same time. So that's also beneficial. I didn't design it that way. That was just fluke, but we'll take it.
So looking in the roster monthly report, what events are a call firefighter going to be called in for?
So anytime we have simultaneous calls, which happens.
That's down here?
Yep. If it's an all-tone, so Regional Dispatch. So an all-tone is a list of basically six categories, and it's the same for all the communities within the Regional Dispatch system, so there's some consistency. So any report of active flame or fire, natural gas leak, which we had a propane truck, propane tank struck a few weeks ago, multiple medicals, or if the ambulance transports, we bring somebody back. So we still have two people available, just like today, to handle two calls at the same time. And then motor vehicle accidents that are significant on the highway. And then we call them high-risk occupancies. To lump them into one, commercial occupancies or schools, anything that, you know, has a large population within it when the fire alarm burns off. Average residential burnt food, just can see on-duty staff. Whereas if a school fire alarm comes in, that would be, everybody comes back.
Okay. So if I look down this list of, you've got about, what, ten activities down here? About half of them, four of them? That's what the, I mean, the Fire Administration, they're not involved with so much, or Academy, none of that.
So incident station response would be one, storm coverage would be another, training, and then all-tone, and then ambulance coverage.
Okay. Just needed to know, those are the times where. Okay, just needed to know, those are the times where?
Yep, without the call. Yep. Okay. Just other things to mention, we're moving forward with a few different grants. Chief Fitzgerald allows, sorry, seven, no, that was me. Chief Fitzgerald is nice enough to allow us to apply for the EMPG grant this year that he was talking about that they're revamping. This year, we just got notified this afternoon that we awarded it, so that will give us two different, it's $2,700, but it allows two different devices for fighting vehicle fires, more specifically electric vehicle fires. One's a blanket, and then one's a special nozzle that goes under the car to cool the batteries. They can burn up to 24 or 36 hours, so it allows those to be done. And then we're looking at some equipment grants and some other grants we're moving forward.
Are you looking at SAGR grants?
We are, yep. Those haven't come out yet, the assistance of firefighter grant has come out, so our SCARD air packs are the number one thing we really need, otherwise we'd definitely have to fund those next year. We're going to shoot for the moon and try to get a fire truck out of it as well. That's like hitting the Powerball in Mega Millions at the same time, so we're going to try that, and then the other one was, oh, a combined training grant with Essex. So together, we got a high likelihood of getting that, we're going to come up, so we train together and set some standards between both towns, so we'll train co-ysely.
Do you work with the Essex Fire Chief?
All the time. I talk to him probably four or five times a week, yep.
What kind of issues do you?
For?
Call them up and say, how's it going, or?
Oh, yeah, so we look, we look at, you know, what type of issues they're having, if they have a broken piece of equipment, we have a broken piece of equipment. We do automatic aid now, so anytime that they have a report of smoke in the building, we automatically go, same thing, them coming to us, and then we try to combine our trainings as much as possible. Since we're doing that automatic aid, it's really important for the left hand to know what the right hand's doing, so trying to integrate that a little bit more.
Great. Anyone have anything else?
Coming out of the flooding?
Yes. So the Saturday was, it was a Saturday, right? Saturday was definitely worse than the Wednesday or Thursday. So it crested, if you've been in our basement garage, there's a step up and then it goes into the boiler room, so it crested that step, which, that was a first, but the boilers are also up a little bit, so it did not get to the boilers. But it was, we didn't lose anything, and we have our, all of our sandbags all lined up and ready to go, but it's definitely problematic. And some of the calls we went to, obviously, we've had, that was a busy time for us, call line wise, so.
This one is for Greg. Where is the HVAC for the fire department in the list of things to consider? I think we've talked about, that boiler is old, it's running on fuel oil, and we're moving.
I'm trying to remember, we did talk about a Green Communities Grant to replace it, but it didn't.
So if I remember correctly, they were looking at a heat pump, but because of where the building is and geography and things like that, it wasn't going to hit whatever numbers it needs to hit.
Score high enough.
Yeah, score high enough to land those.
Is it possible to raise the existing boiler?
Probably, I mean, yes, I'm not sure how much.
Everything's possible.
Everything, everything is possible, yes.
A lot of replumbing, but yes.
Yes.
And then the ladder truck, just give an update?
Yep, so ladder truck is near in completion. We go out, the company brings us out in the second week in March to look at it, and to do a final walkthrough of the truck, make sure it meets the specifications. It was a demo truck, so we were able to change some things, other things were already in production, so we weren't able to change. They've been working with us very closely, and we should have it, well, we will have it by July 1st by contract, so even though it got pushed out, it was supposed to be completed by now.
Being the parade.
Well, hopefully, it'll be outfitted by then.
If I have a side man in a belt, that's all I really care about.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we should have it July, my, my hope is, middle of July it'll be in service and operation, so. It makes its way from Minnesota this way, a demo, which is actually good, because if there's any issues, they can work it out before it gets, so we don't have to deal with it, so. We should have a loner truck, either PVD's third ladder truck shortly, or Essex's old one, when their new ones already, their new ones already in, so we can get their old one in the meantime. So we should have coverage, my guess is, March 1st, first week or two of March, we should have coverage.
Did check the emissions on the Essex driver?
No comment.
See, the problem is Essex doesn't care.
Any other?
No, I just, I know that Kathy is, is probably wants to say this, and I'll say it for her, nice job with all the graphs.
That's the new software! It does what I was.
He's a businessman, he gets it.
Everyone's like, how do you track the percentage of year past versus to the two decimal points? There's a reason for that, because if there's a problem, you identify it a little sooner than.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Heidi.
Next is the town administrator.
Okay.
And I would like you to give us an overview first.
Sure, sure. So, yeah, the last, the last quarter, we cleaned together the preliminary budget, was certainly front and center, looking at all the department heads, and Abby and others to pull it all, all the numbers together, so that has gone smoothly. Obviously, the special trial meeting in the fall was an effort that, well, we obviously had the problem with the clickers, but otherwise it went very smoothly. And a team has worked very diligently to make sure that we've understood what happened and proceeding well with the solutions going forward with those. Obviously, real estate conversations were front and center, both communities and the Nasons. One is going successfully, the other one has taken a turn, and is sort of out of our hands at this point, so. Wasn't for lack of effort, there was, some things go different ways than you want them to. Some hiring, we have the new town planner onboard, Mark Gresnik, started up a few weeks ago, and we also hired a new conservation agent with a new shared arrangement with Hamilton. Still working on a few kinks with that in terms of scheduling and trying to make sure that there's enough time in the day to do both communities. So a little bit of a work in progress, but hopefully we will get there. The governance committee, as you note, done quite a bit of work, I will give another report later on this evening on that. Have held two all-boards meetings and have worked at identifying ways to hopefully streamline and better coordinate the efforts of the various boards and committees in conjunction with departments. So again, I think a worthwhile effort that has fit in well with some of your goals. Obviously, looking ahead, preparations for the annual town meeting will be front and center, finalizing the proposed budget, working with finance committee on a weekly basis, and getting your input as well will be important, and seeing what the special articles will be needed, a little early to tell at this point. I do not foresee MBTA zoning on this, on the annual, I think that will wait until the fall for a special town meeting, just in terms of the timing. It has to be vetted by both the planning board and then it has to be vetted by the state.
The state needs 90 days, and there aren't 90 days.
Correct. Hopefully, they won't take all 90, but you have to, you have to plan on it, so. And in terms of transition or succession planning for my position, again, we have a couple of staff members who remain very interested in our attending different trainings that we are identifying together, so I think that's off to a good start. And we'll have to, we should talk some more, a little bit about timing, and can say that for another meeting if you'd like to focus, have a focused discussion on what the, what the timeline will look like. But we should be anticipating during recruiting, probably next fall at the latest. So something to think about, and we'll have a more depth conversation about that going forward. So I think that's enough summary for now. Happy to answer questions or delve into any of the items in a little more detail.
Yeah, no, Greg, I have the greatest admiration for all the balls that you juggle.
A lot of balls, thank you.
And I think staffing was perhaps a little bit more active this, this quarter than some of the others, so you had to fill a couple of blanks. Question on your succession planning, you've never retired before.
This is true.
And have you ever had, in your, in your previous positions, had to lay out a succession plan for somebody who was going to replace you, or did you simply resign, I'm going someplace else and it was their problem? In other words, are you doing this for the first time to say, okay, this is how we're going to find out?
In terms of the, this is a more concerted effort on succession planning, just because there's more time. The, the other two transitions that I went through, I was, both times I, I stayed on in terms of sort of a consulting capacity.
Yes.
You know, that's, that's up to you to decide, and the new person coming on, how much you want that. But in both cases, I did about a six-month, part-time, you know, available for consultation.
I mean, all of us know the complexities you deal with, and you can't just say, here, I'm going to leave in two weeks or four weeks, it's just an odd lot going on.
Right, and we do have the luxury of having more time this time. So both my other transitions, probably a couple months notice.
All right, okay, and all of these?
Having, you know, a year and a half is, gives us more time to think through that, but yes.
Okay, and so the trainings that you're suggesting you're doing are perhaps appropriate for the individuals that have expressed an interest in?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, my other two transitions, that was not the case, there was, there were not in-house candidates.
Yeah.
So that was a recruiting effort that brought someone from the outside.
Yeah, just along that line, the succession planning, I'm glad that some internal candidates have expressed some interest, so that's always good. Succession planning, though, however, is, and I've talked to Chief Fitzgerald about this as well, you're preparing candidates to compete for the position, right? That's all.
Yep.
There's no promise of.
Correct.
Of being hired, because we don't even know who's going to be on the board, right? So we don't know who's going to be here. All we can do, and it's just very important to message that in these conversations, you're giving them the best possible chance to compete. Regarding the training, I think that's great, however, what's even more helpful is letting them do some of your job now. So when we were talking with Chief Fitzgerald, it was very visible, the ways that he is doing that with some of the people on his succession plan, whatever it is that you might be doing in that regard, it's just not as visible. I think the board should start to see, delegate certain things, even small things, you know, to people who are interested in being, you know, having your job, so, because part of, you know, what people don't always understand is what made them successful in their current role is not going to make them successful in your role, right? It's a different role. So they need the practice of, you know, doing pieces of your job that gives them the best possible chance to compete. So I would just really encourage you to do that.
An example that's not that visible is having the ceiling on some union negotiations.
Exactly.
So they've been doing.
Yep, that's great, that's great.
But that's not a very visible.
Right, but it's good, so I'm glad you mentioned, though, that you're doing that, that's great.
We can continue to think of those opportunities.
Yes, and, and even, one of the things I value personally most about you is your ability to communicate. You're very succinct, you're very crisp, you get to the point. That takes practice, and I really, whoever is on your succession plan or has an interest in your position, I would personally like to see them communicate to the community on something. Do your weekly letter in the cricket, you know, take a turn, whatever. You are just such an outstanding communicator that whoever comes after you has really big shoes to fill in that regard, and may need as much practice as possible. You just do a great job there. I also wanted to commend you on your hiring. You know, sometimes when we talk about there being an open position, we all get a little nervous, oh, who's going to want to take the job? We've got to stop that, because you hire great people, okay? This is a wonderful town, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful community, and people actually like being here. So, you know, the next time we have an opening, let's open that position with courage and optimism that we're going to find a great candidate, because that's what you've been doing, as far as I can see, so, thank you.
I got nothing.
Becky? I'm going to echo what John said. We are fortunate, and I've had the pleasure of being on a number of, involved in town while you're, with you at the head, Greg, and it's, it's pretty remarkable. I just, I can't say that enough, and, thank you.
I didn't say it, but you know I meant it.
You didn't. Try it again.
I told him in private.
Okay, so that nobody notices?
Right.
So that we think you're not doing anything.
Exactly.
There you go. Ian's got you pegged.
You hire very good people. Not 100%.
No, no.
But many of the things you hired have, have just made a huge difference to the town. I used to hear gossip about this person is stealing and that person is not, doesn't show up, and that's true.
Glad, I'm glad to hear you say that.
So, kudos on that, absolutely, and whoever replaces you is going to start way ahead of where you started. Thank you. Any?
Greg, do you have any comments?
No, just kidding. Do you have any questions for yourself?
Well, I, I mean, thank you for the, the support. We have some big challenges. They loom large, and I worry about those challenges. It's, it's getting harder to govern. I think you all have experienced that, and I think we need to keep working that. I think part of the governance project can help with that in terms of communications and trying to always encourage opinions to be expressed, but in a way that we can all hear.
Right.
And I think, I think the town does a good job that way. There are obviously times when that doesn't happen, but I think the majority of times it does, and that speaks well to the community and all of you, but it takes work to keep at it. So I just, I do worry about that long-term, and I think we have a real challenge ahead of us with the school, and the division we're seeing with, with Essex. There's a very different philosophy, and it's going to be hard to meld the two. And I think that's going to take some real, again, some real concerted effort on everybody's part. People care a lot about the schools, and it's a very passionate topic, and it means a lot to people, so I think, I don't think we can underestimate the importance of that. So I just encourage us to, in the next two months, we'll put some real energy in. So I just encourage us to, in the next two months, we'll put some real energy into trying to foster some dialogue that promotes some solutions.
Yeah. Yep. I know they're having, within the town itself, some very polarized perspectives, which hopefully we can help.
Keep being open and holding forums and having conversations, and that's, that's the best way to make sure we're going to have a fighting chance of coming up with good solutions.
We have ten minutes. I'd like to take up the consent agenda, and I'd like to remove the meeting minutes for January 2nd for correction, which I just got to. Find it, because I got it here. On the third page of the minutes for January 2nd, under liaison updates, I was obviously not clear, it is the school committee that doesn't want, that insists on open meetings, not the town of Essex. The town of Essex insists on closed meetings. The town of Manchester is willing to go anywhere, anytime.
I'll make that correction.
Thank you. With the exception of that, I think perhaps, do we want to talk at all about the early beach tag fee and process?
I would like to pull out the special events permits, add a couple of questions on some of those.
Beach tags?
Yes.
Uh, yes. There's an increased fee.
Twenty dollars for $25.
Twenty-five dollars for the early tags. Now, that was because of charging, et cetera. Now, what about the regular season tags? Are they going to go up five bucks?
So those are sold at the beach for cash.
Okay.
So there's not a...
Oh, just cash, straight cash. They're not going to do anything with cards. Okay.
Yeah, we struggle with readers out there.
Don't want to do that.
Good service.
Okay, all right. So it's just the early ones, because it's a charge card?
Right.
How do they, I'm sorry. How do they actually, when they're at Singing Beach, collect the fees? Are we, is it a, is it cash?
Yep.
How are they, and how do we keep track of, is it just, you know, you've got so many tags that get sold?
They're numbered sequentially, so they know, they know how many they have sold in a day, and that needs to match the cash receipts for that.
And it's less, that's less the concern and more, is there any concern about the people who are down there having a lot of cash on hand?
So they will do a run to the bank in the middle of the day if it's an extra busy day.
Okay.
So, to answer your question, yes, there's some concern about it, so.
If that were to be a known situation, that...
Now everyone knows.
Now everyone knows. Exactly.
So if someone comes in and wants to buy a beach tag here, of course, it's out of the clerk's hands, because it's now in parks and, right? They can't do that. They would be instructed, "Hey, when you want to go to the beach, you're going to buy it there."
After the...
Yes, after the time. That's right.
So between April 30th and May 25th, you can't get a beach tag?
I don't know if I'm going to say can, but I'm sure Cheryl would sell it if someone came to her office.
And what would she sell it for?
Yeah.
That's your question.
Well, that's part of my question. Where would, and it's worth a beach tag cost?
That's a good question.
That would be the 35.
Okay.
After, after that cutoff date, yeah.
Okay.
It'd be the 35.
But it would be cash?
No.
Not at all.
Because, because you're charging for plastic, but if you're not going to use plastic after that point. So, so that extra charge is only when you're using plastic, and it's only for that window, and that's it. Otherwise, it's cash, one way or the other.
I kind of anticipate that we're going to hear from people about raising the cost from 20 to 25.
Costs have been low for so long, though. I mean, I think that when we talk about having, you know, wanting to pay for the service...
It's 20 for the entire season, and it, I mean, it does not affect our, you know, people over a certain age and children under a certain age. I mean, it's a, it's a specific age group, typically working, working folks, right?
When we, when we initiated this, there was a lot of pushback.
When, when the fee first became...
Yeah, when it, when it was separated from the tag.
From the car.
From the car.
Yeah.
And perhaps we ought to consider raising the regular fee. If we're going to raise, I understand that there isn't any economic justification for it, but it might make, you know, people feel less bad.
Right. What you're saying, why punish the people who are buying it earlier and making our life easier, right? If you're going to raise the fee, raise it for everybody, and that would be fair.
My concern is that we've seen two increases in the last three years. Okay. And significant increases. And I think that's what I'm, what I'm looking at, that's my fear, people are going to push back on that.
So didn't we have to pay higher labor rates for the lifeguards and...
Yes, we do.
I mean, to me, that's the justification, that there's a real staffing concern, and we're trying to make that beach self-sufficient, right? As much as possible. You've got to pay them more.
The question would come down, do taxpayers want to underwrite other people's use of the beach, or is it a pay for itself?
Yeah.
And I just, again, I think that we've had fees kept low for a very long time, and not that anybody wants to pay more, but I just...
I think we should have been prepared to justify the pricing.
Yeah, but five bucks for the credit card fee, which is, what, 2%?
Three.
Three.
It depends on what you're using. Amex is more, they doubt it.
So it's the charge and the mailing of the tags. That's, that's the hard cost that we...
Okay. Oh, 60 cents plus.
And the pins cost money, too, oddly. I wouldn't think that's about the pins.
So, if I recall, I mean, Gloucester, for a season pass there, was, it's more than $20, I would think, right?
What, Kathy?
Gloucester, I was wondering. I think, to your point, I think our fee for the entire season...
Yeah.
...is quite low in comparison to our neighbors. Even if you raise it to 25 in advance and 35, I think.
Oh, yeah, we're still below.
We're still below everybody else.
Yeah.
And the only way this can really be done is, I guess, on the web, the advanced ones. If they were to show up in that window, I mean, Cheryl's not sitting in there with a...
She won't, she, she has somebody that two days a week, then she, she will advertise two days a week that it would be available in person. But we try to encourage people to do the online.
Right.
I do think, we had on our action item list, you know, the review of the park, resident parking stickers slash use of the beach for October discussion.
Right.
So I believe we decided to do that because we wanted to go through another season with the way it is. Are we clear on what data we are going to collect before we begin the season? Are we clear on what data we are going to collect so that when we have the conversation in October, we know what we're looking at?
Yeah, I'll have Cheryl prepare a template and have you review that.
Okay. Can we just make sure...
She took those notes from the last time we had this discussion.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not recalling all of the details of that, but I know that, I know that we took some notes.
I think it would be helpful, since we're going to be talking about parking next, our next meeting, could we just have her do that?
Sure.
And get it to us in our package for that next meeting? That way, we're all up to speed on everything, because I honestly don't remember all the details, and I would appreciate that content for next week, next meeting's discussion.
It would be good for Tiffany to get out. I think the consensus here is that $25 for prepay and $35 after April 30th is, is something we can live with. So perhaps Tiffany should get the dates and the amounts out.
The news.
Minimize the number of people who show up on May 1st and say, "Oh, I've just cost myself 10 bucks."
Probably 20.
Do you want a motion for that?
Yes.
I move that the select board approve the early beach tag fee of $25 and the fee after the early of 35.
Second.
Okay. John?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
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 Okay. Could, with the change, with stuff that we've talked about, could we approve the consent agenda for the meeting minutes, the resignation of Shiva Linahan and Tom Durkin, and hold the, and hold the approval of the special events?
I have one addition or correction, I think, on the 11th. I think I was here in person.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I think it was a, it was a copy paste, I think, from the previous. I was not here on the second.
That was a copy paste.
Yep.
Good guess.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, including the amendments to the January 2nd and January 11th minutes, but not to include special events.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John says yes.
Okay. You know, we are at, we're in the after 7:30, and we take up the NOAA grant, isn't this a special one? Greg?
I'll turn it over to Becky and Kathy for that one.
Did everybody have a chance to read through the information sent regarding the NOAA grant and the interview criteria we used? Does anybody have any questions? We, after interviewing both respondents, MAPC and Town Green, it was unanimous that we felt that the Town Green would be addressing our local needs in a way that would support us in a better way. Both, both were very good and had a lot of strength. But we felt more confident with Town Green.
Yeah, I would, I would only add that, you know, Town Green is also a subawardee on the grant, so they have, you know, if we agree to let them administer it, they have two distinct roles. Part of that, though, meant that they were very well-versed in the grant and the players. MAPC certainly could do the job. I think we felt their response was a bit generic. The Town Green folks really had a solid command of what that grant was supposed to do, what each of the players were supposed to do. They were just very knowledgeable in a different way. The MAPC had a very interesting background, though, in emergency preparedness. They seemed to respond to the grant with a very strong emergency preparedness focus. And, and when we looked at the subawardees and what they're supposed to be working on, you know, that would have been a nice skill set to have, but there seemed to be, like I said, a little bit different focus for the grant. We also did have just one question, Greg, because of the nature of all of those subawardees. Town Green was under the impression, and Becky, correct me if I get this wrong, Harvard has a big piece of this grant, okay? Town Green, as an administrator, I don't think they felt that they were going to be managing Harvard's work so much as the steering committee would be.
Correct.
Okay. So that is how, okay.
That's correct.
So they were really focused on the subawardees, the local folks, and that was one of the reasons, I think, why we also picked them, because whoever's on the steering committee is going to be managing Harvard and...
Yes. That's true. And just a side note, so they are intimately involved with the grants we have for emergency management.
Okay.
That same team.
Good, okay.
That same team is involved, working with Todd and Jake, and with the shelters and all of that.
Good.
So we did receive some grant money for that, and they've been helping with that intimately.
I do think they, they admitted, though, that this particular grant was, the whole grant was larger than something they historically, the particular project manager, something she historically had managed, but since Harvard is not really under their purview, then it's, it's more in align with the size of grants they, they're comfortable in. Anything further?
No, I, I agree with the conclusions that Becky and Kathy made. Town Green, local, they certainly knew the region, I think, better than the MAPC, because they're here, and they had more experience with climate. MAPC administratively, frankly, they were very strong. But there's a little bit more than just checking boxes on administration here, and I felt Town Green really kind of knows exactly what's going on.
Is there anyone online?
So again, just, just for the record, I am on the board of, that's why I step back from this process and let, and let the committee do their, do their work.
John, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry, I'm not a good presenter. Who's supposed to say what?
I moved that the select board award a contract to Town Green to provide the administrative assistance to the NOAA grant.
Second.
Ready to vote? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John says yes.
Okay. And again, we are a little ahead of schedule. Why don't we take a special event permit?
Yep. Since I'm the one who asked, I have it pulled out. There were a couple of questions. One was regarding the Easter egg hunt. The only, the only question about that is they listed Fordrye Harbor's Point as the address. Do they still have that community center as the address there?
I don't believe so. I don't, I don't, I don't know what they're using for an official address.
And my...
Well, the eviction hasn't really happened yet, has it?
Was that?
The eviction is still, is ongoing, so, yeah.
Okay, so maybe they...
Okay, that's their address. Fine, I just, I just wanted to be, and it's great that they'll be doing the Easter egg hunt. That'll be fun. Then on the next one, the Cape Ann Kids Pan Mass Challenge. There were a couple of questions I had on that. There were a couple of questions I had on that. I didn't see that we had the insurance, that we had received the insurance. Is that... I just, I, I'm...
No.
Okay, and, because it also said that they would be staying, it's listed as being at Mascanomo, but some of the run, does that take place? Some of it's to Singing Beach and back, and then Three Mile, Five Mile, and 11. So do we need, does it need to be noted that it's more than Mascanomo? In terms of police presence on the roads? Just for safety?
Can I suggest that we send this one back and make sure that we get the insurance and...
And police details?
It does, it's...
Yeah, it's not...
It's not until May, so...
Okay.
To delay is not going to help it.
And then the other thing, the next one with the You Can Sports. The dates, the event date is listed for September 17th, 2023. So it has the wrong event date. And it also ticked a number of boxes on the event's details, but we didn't, we don't have that extended information. And this, too, was talking about roads being, asking that roads be closed to traffic. And this is the downtown. That's Pine Street, Summer Street, Washington. So it's closing off a portion of the town. And what I'm wondering is instead of close it, can we have it done in portions? I don't, I'm not sure about having all the roads closed at one time.
I think closing central streets is awkward.
Yeah, that's going to be a tough one, but...
We can just detail it.
I mean, I'm looking at this application. It looks like it was last year's application.
Well...
It's also signed with last year's date.
I was going to say the last one.
Yeah.
That's not me yet.
No, you're the next one.
I'm hitting the screen, I know, and I'm hearing all what you're saying.
You're coming up.
Yep.
So I think that that one, since it seems to be in September, we can kick that one back for more dates, I mean, the correct dates. If they've filled in a box for the details, please provide us with that information. But also, I think we need to, I don't know about closing the downtown for, what do they say? Nine to noon?
Yeah, so in the past, this has been run, I think, you know, the, just during the critical time when the runners are going through.
Right.
We can get more details on the chief on that's been handling.
Okay. Okey dokey.
Can we approve the application for the Easter egg hunt?
Do you want to go over the last?
Okay, let's go over the last one.
The last event?
Yep.
And I had some questions on this one as well. It, it, on this, it says setup times one hour, breakdown one hour. So typically, what we're given is more specific time frames?
Okay. So from four to five would be set up and from seven to eight would be breakdown.
Okay, and it also, as far as needing police details and ambulance, that's something you need to work out.
Correct, yep.
And has, if I may?
Of course.
Have you been in touch with fire and police at this point?
So I wanted it to get past this stage. I talked with Betsy, who did the happiest clamory. So I sat down with her and she gave me a seven-page thing of how to do this properly and put letters to neighbors and who to contact and make the town happy and make it fun.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to just go through the process of that. I do have my letters already made up for the police and the fire department to send after this got approved today, hopefully. And then I would go from there with the fire and police. I also would ask the fire station to use their paramedic at that time, if we could. I did reach out to alternative sources and that would be something we'd have to budget with the PTO, but we're looking to bring this back, so.
I think it'd be nice to have it come back. I also have concerns about closing those streets all at one time, as well as needing the insurance.
Sure.
So we don't have that in here?
And the insurance is through the PTO, which is covered, the insurance that we already have.
And we need, we have to see that before we can approve it. Does anybody else have any questions on this one?
So that's two insurances we're missing, then.
Just a process check, wouldn't we want the police and fire conversation to happen before we approve it?
I did go to the station and they said, you need to go do this. You know, we're on board for whatever. If they say it's okay, we'll help you. I got the quote on how much their detailing would be, the minimum, the admin fee, all of that sort of stuff. So did have a-ish conversation, but not full.
It's, it's, can be a little confusing. We definitely get that and we just need to make sure all the...
Absolutely.
Everything is...
You tell me what steps I need to do and I will get them done for you.
Are we clear on what steps?
So we need the insurance. And then do you want me to approach the police further? Or with the insurance, would you feel comfortable enough to say, let's move forward with the, or what else do I need?
I think rather than closing all the streets at one time, if it's possible to do them sequentially, that might...
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is five to eight, is it?
This is a 5K, so this is only the 3.1. So it's really known as the heater around here or the parade. It's almost the parade route.
Right.
So I feel like a lot of Manchester is going to be, you know, just know the route at least. It is going to be less than an hour is our time limit for this race to be done, but there will be children running it. And so that's my only concern. Or if we could close half the street, you know, depending on the participants. I know I've run the half here and I don't remember the full streets being closed down when we got to town, but maybe half those streets, I don't know if I remember.
I guess I have a couple of questions. I have, so this is a race that used to be run?
Yes, so it was five years ago.
And it was always run in the evening?
Last, the last time they did it was a Friday night.
So the reason I ask is because that seems like a really odd time. And if I owned a restaurant in downtown on a Friday evening, you're telling me people can't drive to my restaurant? I would be a little uncomfortable with that.
We could change the route, too.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, we have a hard enough time, you know, helping our restaurant stay successful.
Yeah.
I would not be a fan of closing down any street with a restaurant on it. I just, that's prime dining time.
My other concern was like if we went over the railroad track with the train.
I think that's a whole different, we don't have...
Yeah, so we'll, I will, I can map something else out, maybe a couple of different proposed routes. If that would be easier.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
If you could look back at what happened before 2020.
They've done a route like this, they've done to Singing Beach and back. They've, they've done several different things, but I mean, we can get creative and something.
Why do I think I remember that they used to be on Saturday mornings?
I was going to say, yeah.
It was only one time that they did the Friday night.
Oh, okay.
And they said that was the most successful, that they raised money for the school. However, was it most successful for the town? Not so sure.
I remember this, I, I mean, with that line, it was Saturday mornings.
Yeah, or unless it could be, even if you do a loop back or something.
Yeah, we can...
I'm sure you can come up with something.
Many places to run.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, but...
No, that's okay. It's still early, we're hoping sometime in May, so yeah, we have time to figure it out.
So you want an approval of the Easter egg hunt?
Yes, please.
A motion to approve the special event Easter egg hunt. For this. Okay.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
I say yes.
Kathy says?
Yes.
Brian? Becky?
Yes.
So the state of the consent agenda is the meeting minutes have been corrected and the legislations have been approved or accepted with a nice letter going to each of them, making them for their... And the Easter egg hunt and the beach tag. Okay, now it's five minutes late and we can take up...
Town meeting?
ATM.
The ATM.
So you've set the date for Wednesday, April 24th. It's the annual town meeting date, which means that the petition, since petition articles are due in, by the 22nd of February, for 60 days ahead of time. So that's, I wrote about that in last week's paper. And we'll post that up on the website, too.
Our policy is that the petition, we've all, the signatures has to be in, but there's no requirement that the signatures be verified by the website.
We do that once they've been submitted.
If it's submitted by that date, it's, okay, because there was some question.
There was some question, yes, yep.
When you're putting it up on the website, it has to make... I think it has been clarified on the website somewhere, but in the same place that it's...
So like I indicated, Finance Committee is making, you know, meeting weekly and making good progress. There'll be some additional fine tuning. There's already been some fine tuning as we go forward. On the positive side, I think our health insurance number will come in a little lower than what we anticipated, so that helps. And there's some other changes, pluses and minuses. We'll get a summary of those as we get a little closer to the end of the month. As I mentioned, the school budget is a big item. It will require some additional conversations. I've outlined some possibilities of some strategies going forward. Need to get into those in depth tonight, but at some point, I think it'd be helpful if we do. If you wanted to dive in, that's fine as well. Just to give the summary, the, in addition to the actual school operating budget, we also have two other fairly large asks for the school, and that is our final share of the turf field renovations. So originally, the thought was for the town to pay in cash our share of Coach Field Field?
Yes.
Did I say that right? And...
Airfield Field.
And then to have the district borrow funds for Highland Field. So that Essex did not want to borrow and so it takes the two towns to agree to the borrowing. So the district has that borrowed, so we need to pay the remainder for that field. And so it's roughly $300,000 more that we owe for that.
For Highland?
For Highland.
And I thought we'd already approved. Are we paying more than...
So the original projection was us to pay 1.2 of the total of 1.6. Our total came in at 1.1.
For both fields?
For both fields. So, so we owed half of Coach Field Field and we owed 2/3 of Highland.
Is that because?
Is that quite correct? I think we owe...
No, wait, we said that wrong.
That's the opposite, Coach Field Field, right? Because that's town land?
We owed more, we owed more on the, we owed a hundred, we...
We owe...
We owed half, we owed half of, half of it is strictly ours. And then of the remaining half of Coach, we owe 2/3 of that remaining.
Because it's technically town land.
Yes.
And Park and Rec uses that field extensively and so on. So we owe, so that's how we owe more on Coach. And then at Highland, we owe the 2/3 based on the apportionment formula. So grand total, originally 1.2, it came in a little below budget, so 1.1. We've already allocated 800 to $400,000 allocations, so we owe another 300. So that's one vote, special vote for the school that's needed.
And then they're okay with that? Because I'm reading here that they had originally wanted it to go from drawing down on the stabilization fund for that? Was that...
Finance Committee.
The school, the school... Go ahead.
So, so a few meetings ago, the Finance Committee said, you know, again, fund balance, free cash and stabilization were higher than the 8%.
Right.
Why don't we prepay some of our OPEB obligations? So they were suggesting to put, take 800 from stabilization and put it into OPEB. But they have not talked about this new, these new numbers. And I think they will want to, my recommendation is that they revisit that OPEB funding because this is a higher priority.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I'm getting this straight because the district's funding, of course, is completely independent of FinCom. So this has...
This was our stabilization money, no?
Right, this has nothing to do, this is the money that we as the town put into the fields, not the district portion, which is that other...
Big of it is what we owe, grand total. We owe 1.1 million towards those fields.
Right.
And we had paid 800,000. We originally thought we were going to borrow and pay over time, 400 plus 300, the 700.
Okay, it clicked in, thank you. Just clicked.
Okay. So, so that's one piece. And then the other piece is assuming that both towns approve going forward with the feasibility study for the Essex Elementary School. We don't know the exact cost of that feasibility. We're estimating between a million and a million and a half. So that's why you see that range of 440 to 660 would be our share of that. So the district would pay a third and then the remaining 2/3s, Manchester would pay 2/3 of that remaining 2/3s.
We would pay 2/3 of the remaining 2/3s. Okay.
I'm telling you, this is where pie chart would be.
Yes?
2/3 of 2/3 of that.
Good colors, that is.
Different colors.
4 nights, maybe an ovale.
There you go.
44%.
So those are, you know, those are two big numbers. And that'll have an impact on, obviously, the stabilization of fund balance.
And stabilization...
And stabilization takes a two thirds vote, doesn't it?
It used to. They just changed that law.
Oh, really?
And it only takes a majority vote now.
Oh, that's good, well that, that's easy.
That is a change, they just, just last month, December. They did it as part of the supplemental. So that is a change.
When will the school know? Will the school know what the feasibility study is going to cost before we have to, before April 24th?
They'll, they'll have a good sense of that, yes. Oh yeah, definitely, April 24th. Yeah, she hopes to, Pam hopes to get a pretty good sense of that in the next little bit here.
Are you going to go, you were. Will we guys talk about all five items, or can we just think about them until it comes up the next time?
It's up to you, how much you want to dive into the.
When do we plan to have another discussion on the school budget?
When?
Yeah.
This point is scheduled for the 22nd of February. And I don't know if that's going to hold. Because that's, that's school vacation week.
No.
I don't, I, I, I'm pretty sure Pam's away. So I don't think that's going to work.
Perhaps we should consider scheduling a, a band meeting. Because they haven't voted on, on the budget yet.
Right, they'll do that next week.
They'll do it next tomorrow.
I'm sorry, the sixth is tomorrow, yes. Yes, yes, yes. So I think we'll, I think Finance Committee will have to flip flop the 22nd agenda with the number of Wednesday of the following week is.
Okay.
Twenty, twenty eighth? I think it is.
So perhaps.
So perhaps the school budget is a, is a discussion on the 28th.
Okay.
Do all five of these points involve the current school budget? Or some of them?
No.
I mean, I'm looking here and trying to put it into one pile or the other.
I would say.
And. It seems like there are two piles here.
Yeah. Yeah, one, two, and three are not going to happen for this, for this budget.
I would agree.
Maybe four and five.
All right.
So, one, number one is.
That's long.
Pushing up the bonds.
Yes.
Uh, for the new school, doing anticipation notes to buy some time. Number two is conducting operational reviews. And that's going to take some time. Number three is taking a look at the apportionment formula to see either if you increase the weight of. The value of properties and or put some sort of guardrails as to how much of it increased any, either community might experience in one year. And then four is use of fund balances, both towns and district to perhaps get over this struggle we have as a temporary basis. And then five is having Essex approve an override.
Both of those, we're just going to be revisiting this all next year.
Yes.
Four and five just says, okay, we solved it for a few months.
Right.
Five was, there are people on the other schools who say we cannot pay much of the money. And if they can demonstrate that that is not a majority of the Essex voters, that can make the next steps easier for them. So could we think about scheduling a meeting, a special, a meeting just to talk about schools? After the Finance Committee has just, has had their discussion? I don't think we want to do that jointly, I think the Finance Committee wants to have its discussion, come up with its ideas, and then we review that.
Yep, I agree.
Maybe somebody could find a day when there isn't much else going on.
What would we be discussing at that meeting? And the reason I'm asking this is um, since the school district functions independently.
Um, whether we consider that their budget is adequate to serve the needs of school. We can't change it.
Okay.
But we can do our feedback as Essex gave their feedback last year.
Thank you.
And we, we would be, at some point, when we get ready to do the warrant for the town meeting, we would need to make a recommendation or not anyway, so.
But.
Just having multiple discussions on it.
Yes, this is, this is not something where we're going to get one meeting and get it all sorted.
Exactly, yes, exactly.
Oh, we have report distribution next.
Yes. Which is why Mr. Keel has joined us this evening.
Oh.
Hello, Mr. Keel.
So Susan, if we get Eli and Sue Thorn here, we could have this whole bench.
Wouldn't that be nice? Go get him.
So Tom has been instrumental in giving the ATM packets distributed with the Scouts' help. And so the fundamental question before you is, do we want to continue the delivery to every household? It's, it's not required, your bylaw doesn't require that to be the case for the annual town meeting. It, it calls for the reports to be available in four or five locations in town. Town hall, the fire station, police station, the school, the post office. And obviously you'd want them available at the meeting itself, which is what most people actually look at them. And uh, and so it, again, the question is, in today's digital world, where a lot of people are very used to looking at things online. Is it, is it necessary to go through the expense and labor of delivering them to, to every household? It is a, it is an owner's undertaking. The Scouts obviously have made it easier, but it still takes a lot of work and coordination and printing twenty-five hundred copies is, is expensive.
So questions, that's not the only document that goes out in that little packet. There's also a school budget?
School.
A school report.
The school have not set theirs out with us for about maybe three years now.
They've been mailing them the last few years.
Okay, and then there's the, there's the warrant.
There's the Finance Committee report and warrant.
Right.
So those are the three basic booklets, and then.
A book is the biggest by far.
Right.
So is the suggestion being made that whatever's being delivered, everything perhaps is electronic, or is it just the book because of its cost printing? I assume the other one, the other items, it's smaller and black and white.
Right, but if we're not delivering the annual report, I don't think we would deliver the Finance Committee report either. We would again, just make them available and then have, have honestly copies for everyone who comes to the town meeting.
Because the book is a historic piece, the other pieces are forward looking.
Yes.
Which is something that's going to happen, and we want you to show up.
Yes.
With that thing. Okay.
Could the book be put online rather than as a set of separate reports? Because it ordinarily has pictures and um, so could it be presented as a booklet document rather than, or would it be presented as?
It'd be just, it'd be the electronic version of what you're used to, of the book.
Okay.
So we do that now, we, we do put the booklet online.
Do you know how many people, do you know how many people download it?
I don't have that number, potentially probably could look that up for us.
Tom had a, and I just.
Just going to say, I know it wasn't the most important thing that was brought up at the meeting prior to the fall town meeting, but I did mention that if we pushed this ahead. As we did at the town meeting, then the delivery date was going to be in the middle of the school vacation.
Right.
And trying to have youth available to do that delivery during school vacation is not coming more and more difficult. More and more people go.
Youth and, and parents, and the parents are.
Yeah, the, the parents are the drivers, yeah, exactly. The Scouts actually started to deliver these books, they used to be delivered by the DPW in their green DPW trucks. And then we had a big blizzard at the end of February nineteen sixty-nine. And the town came to the Scouts and said, would you be willing to deliver these to all the things? Because the DPW was still trying to widen the roads out. I can remember seeing kids coming back, being stuck in snow bags up in the air, trying to get, so it's been fifty some odd years now. I don't think, I mean, they can do some assembly if you decide you want to have some sitting there. There certainly are some people who really want to get something to hold on to and something to look ahead of time. That's my opinion. That doesn't mean you shouldn't have any sitting at the, at the town meeting, because people coming into the town meeting who haven't gotten one. But my basic thought is that most of the people who are very active, thinking about coming to the town meeting and discussing things and voting and things like that. Will either go to the library, the town clerk's office, the memorial school, the police station, the fire station, and pick one up. The other thing that we could do, as I mentioned in what I sent to Greg and to Anne, and I'm sure as they shared with the board. Is that if you feel that there are some people who probably aren't going to get out to get one of these, that we'd be willing to set up some afternoon. Where we could get a list from town hall of who would like to get them delivered and deliver them to them. It might, there might be like this partway system, I mean, I don't think you can go from what we've done in the past to completely electronic and say, that's it. That's my opinion.
I think, I agree, I think that it's a nice luxury to have them delivered, but I think it's not necessary any longer. I think that we have five repositories that pick them up, maybe the Council on Aging, I mean, mostly it's going to be seniors for the most part that are going to be looking for this.
And they can pick it up at coffee.
I think they got the, you know, uh.
Sunday coffee.
Okay, but I, I, you know, as you're saying, your workforce is being depleted. And the costs associated with it, I think, you know, a couple hundred, a couple of different locations, and then however it works, and then people, people who want it are going to get it.
That's my belief, right?
So let me, if I may, um, I appreciate the fact that we probably can't continue to do things exactly the way we've been doing it, you know? And as Miss Electronic, I have to tell you, I love my paper, you know, town warrant and annual report. I think there's value in sending something to every home, even if it's just a postcard, to say, hey, we're having the town meeting, go pick up your copy. It's either online at this URL or go pick up a copy. And the reason I think it's still valuable to send something to the house is you have people moving into town who've never lived in a town before. I remember the first time I lived in a town versus a city, and I get this thing, because the Boy Scouts used to drop it off at my other town too. I was like, what is this, you know? Oh, you're supposed to go to town meeting, so it's an education process for people. So I just think it's valuable to send something to the residents, even if it's not the big thick books.
Maybe the Finance Committee report, as the school is currently sending it out.
Yes, yes.
Maybe we could do a bulk mailing of the Finance Committee report.
Something small.
Or, or maybe that could be delivered by the Scouts still, it's just a smaller packet.
Look, it's again, it's, I think it's still a logistics issue. It doesn't matter how big the packages are, ten packages, it's just, it's a lot of logistics.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Sending a small FinCom report is not going to cost fifteen thousand dollars.
What's that going to cost, the mail, the FinCom?
It should not cost fifteen thousand dollars.
No.
For bulk mail?
No, no.
But the difference between delivering the packet to each twenty-two hundred and fifty homes. And delivering the Finance Committee report to twenty-two hundred and fifty homes is not much different in terms of.
Oh, for the Scouts.
Labor.
No, 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 we're doing mailing.
That would be somehow a bulk mail. Then, and it would, it would include a note saying, if you want the full town report, it's available here.
I, I heard what you heard too, Tom, so it's, it's, I, I thought there was still a push for hand delivering some of it. So, but I'm in agreement with Kathy that, that, yeah, let's send something out, bulk mailing, not asking the Scouts to do it.
That would be less expensive, that'd certainly be noise if they've got a bag that all of a sudden is several ounces lighter. Everybody's used to seeing this bag with a pretty big booklet. We'll get some noise about that. If you change the delivery to the mail, there'll be people that won't necessarily react, or there won't be as many people.
Are you all even, is, are the Scouts still doing, I mean, the, the collecting of the bags?
No, we're not doing, we haven't done the food, the food drive.
Right.
Well, that's, yeah.
Right.
I mean, I mean the bag of the, I mean, the, the report is always in a little plastic bag.
Well, the plastic bag was for the food collection.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you're right, that's correct.
That was all part of, and that's what I'm saying, they're not doing that anymore either, so.
I, I, I think what I'm trying to say is, we get the Scouts out of this, all together.
Yes.
Because it's school vacation week and logistically impossible.
I mean, we can put packets together, but it would just, we'd have to do it on the week before school vacation, if you wanted that.
I, I think, but the, then we still have the problem of who drives around to all those houses.
No, that's, those would be the packets that wound up, if you decided, those would be the packets that would wind up at.
Town hall.
Town hall.
Okay.
They would assemble, you would assemble them.
Yeah, we can assemble the packets.
So where there are places to pick it up, you would get the, um, the town report and the Finance Committee report?
And probably a flyer from the Friends of Manchester Trees and.
Okay.
Whatever else.
Fourth of July committee and things like that.
Okay, so the Boy Scouts could put those together to be stationed at various places in town that are accessible. I'm not sure the fire department's particularly accessible at the moment, but maybe they could put a cable out.
You know, they could put one in that little anti lobby outside there, I mean, I, personally, I think people who go to pick them up. Will go either to town hall or the library, those would probably be the two most common places they do it.
And then maybe a couple of satellites set up from the.
No.
No?
Okay.
Okay, you can do that.
I mean, the library is a nice, it's got good hours, you know, it's open.
And there's the.
The only thing is that everything that we needed to put in the package would have to be available by Monday, April eighth. Because the next week is Patriot's Day and it's all school vacation.
Well, I, I think you were trying to buy time.
Well, that buys, that buys two weeks from what it would have been if we had done it previously. Actually, it buys three weeks. Because originally the town meeting would have been done on April first. And we'd do it two weeks before that, so that would be sometime in mid-March. So you have bought three weeks.
If we do do a bulk mailing, we'll also have to consider the lead time for that, is it, are we legally, we're not legally obligated to send anything to anybody's home by a certain time before?
No, it has to be made available.
Okay.
Electronically is.
I think it's seven days.
Electronically is fine, in that.
But also there'll be, high copies will be around.
Yes.
By the time.
I think bulk mail is very ugly these days.
You forgot bulk mail. You need to anticipate the time of bulk mail takes because it is certainly slower.
But that would solve the problem of people who don't know at all.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, I, I think.
Probably more effective than a postcard saying.
Yeah. As long as they get something, I think that would be helpful. Just feedback, there's been some, you know, commentary on Facebook over the weekend because of the method in which the resident parking stickers were sent out. People got multiple mailings to the same home, like one home, you got one per car. There was a lot of consternation about that. So, you know, bulk mail is different. It's a little bit less expensive. But I would just keep that in mind if there's a way, when you ask your printer, if they can send one to the address, not to the voter.
Similarly, households that have different last names got two censuses.
Yeah, there's an assumption that the town is wasting money on the mailings, which may not be true because of the way printers estimate their jobs and, but there's that perception.
I can summarize. At the moment, we are suggesting that we not have the Boy Scouts deliver to every house. That we have hard materials, including flyers from the various charities and the finance committee report available in several places in town. And that we take the finance committee report and print enough of them to do a bulk mailing to every address. Everybody gets something reminding them that there is a meeting coming up and that it's important.
I mean, if the school's gonna mail theirs, we ought to combine mailing.
It would be nice.
It would be nice.
Yes. I'm not sure that we have that much coordination, but we can.
Some of them in the district is separate, so.
But if you use the same printer, they can use the same mailing list and really get, you know.
They use Minuteman. We don't. We use Daily.
Does that meet your needs?
That's fine. I can, I can communicate and talk to Greg just, that we can just leave some time on April eighth to put packets together and things like that. And then those would go out. I guess that would be Greg and probably Alan to determine how many packets you want to have made up. I know Alan, just from working with him, he'll want to have a lot for town meeting because if a person walks in at eight-ten to check in and there's not a packet there for him, Alan will be disappointed.
Okay.
So do we need to decide on a run or how many of these reports are gonna be produced then, tonight? You've run twenty-five-hundred in previous years. You don't need to write that, do that many, but I don't know what the magic number is.
In terms of the other report, probably a thousand.
Okay.
Five hundred for the, for the meeting itself, the five hundred and.
Scattered around.
Scattered around and distributed.
That's what I think. Also to say, probably, probably if you took, use half and say twelve-hundred, that would still save you a lot of printing money.
Yeah.
Which you could pay to the USPS to mail.
And we could also, in the FinCom, when we, when that goes out, say, please look for your, for the PDF online. If you want to print it, print it. Otherwise, bring your. Go to the library, go to the town hall.
That's always been a key, a pleasure.
Yes.
I have my marching orders.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
Have a good one.
Thank you, Tom.
Try not to talk too long, Susan.
Always good to see you.
Good to see you.
Ready?
You're up.
Ready.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So, um, this is a governance project update. I think I was here a few weeks ago when I shared sort of a constructive meeting and what we were trying to do. And I think we, I, the feedback I've gotten is it was a successful meeting last Thursday night. We had about twenty-five or so there. We ran through a recap of sort of the things that we worked on since last June. And we had a checklist of everything. I think it's that in the depth of information, I think Greg mentioned in the packet, of what we talked about. Do we, have we, for sure, is that?
No, but I can go for other.
So this, to me, this is my happy start.
Oh, that Slim Jim?
Yes, yes, yes. Tiffany did an excellent job with that.
You want to pass it around, that's great. I just like people seeing it.
Walk this back.
It came out really good because it's, um, it's a nice, it's sounding, it's a little more sweet.
Yeah, Tiffany did a really nice job laying it out.
Yeah. Good little reference.
Yes. And I think the thought is that as people come on board and they get sworn in, this is part of their package. They're welcome to service. And so it gives people something to use and chairs to use. So I mean, so that's a big piece of it. The most important part of the meeting, blind share of the meeting, was really about the project plan process that we launched. And it was a really great exercise because we gave everybody a blank sheet and then we gave them some prompts. And nobody had exactly the right idea of what needed to happen. And that was actually a perfect outcome because what we wanted people to do is to say, you know, we haven't really thought about this before. It's not something that we've ever really done. And gee, maybe if it is a good idea, you know, how might we do that? So we kind of went through a little workshop and let people kind of see what they had, posted their responses. And then Steve Hart stood up and did a quick overview of the DIP two project. And then Nate did a quick overview of Sweeney Park. And those were great as examples because when people could see how they play out in the examples, it made more sense. And we then had a document that sort of had a very illustrated piece about how this could possibly work. So they got to see a complex project like the DIP two, where there'd be multiple streams of work, all kinds of things to happen. To one that was a little less complicated, the Sweeney Park, but you could see how the interfaces would happen. So the hope is, is that each board and committee will afford this, it's all up on the website now underneath the governance project, thanks to our friends at the, to Croft and Tiffany. So we're hoping that people will adopt it, look at it, use it. I know Ron sent one to the planning board already. I've offered to be more than happy to stop into a meeting or talk to people as they begin the planning process because I think that there's some real value in using this as a tool. Made it abundantly clear, it is not a mandatory piece, but it is a good thing for people to use as, you know, sort of a way of organizing. We could get, the goal of it was to provide some consistent, concise ways to communicate the projects between all of the committees. One example that came up during the meeting, which was great, Lisa, Anvil said, you know, we should go every, at the beginning of every project, you should look at the board and committee list and say, who do we need to engage on this? Who need, who is a stakeholder? Because so often these projects get kicked off and somebody gets forgotten and, you know, you end up retreading the wheel. So if you spend the time planning upfront, it doesn't mean things will go smoothly all the time, God knows. But, you know, at least you've got a way and a structure to do that. So I think it was a very positive meeting. We got some good feedback from the group. And one of the things that we did at the appendix was have the groupings of all the different boards and committees. And one thought is maybe run a little bit of a short workshop for those in the spring where you can bring them together in a short time and do that. But I think the real value of what people love the most is getting together. Sitting with other board and committee members, having good conversations, understanding kind of what's going on and getting that face time. So I think having the meetings maybe three times a year or something like that, however your pace would want to do it. But I think there's a, a value of carrying it forward to do the joint board meetings.
It's also nice, just, just so that, that it keeps that cohesiveness.
I think the other thing too is, we talked a little about the responsibilities of liaisons, right? So we're all liaisons to different committees. And part of our responsibility then is also if we know one of our committees is starting a project, we can remind them, hey, you know, did you go through the committee list? Who else did you need to talk to? So it's, we're, we're, any liaison really is a reinforcing mechanism to try and get people to remember there are other committees doing similar things. And I think a really great outcome would be if the select board, when a project does come forward, you ask the question, have you looked at the project? Have you put it into a plan? Is there, where you want to do this? Just to continue to reinforce it because the adoption of it is going to be something that will take over time. But I think there's such value because at the end of the day, we heard this when we did the surveys, people want to interact with each other. They want to know what's going on so they're not doing all their work in silos. And if we can encourage that through having good information. The other piece is Tiffany and the team are working now to redo the website. There could be some opportunities for the way that these things can get played through as the website gets updated as well, so. Yeah, I think that's, that's a real big opportunity, Greg. I don't know what Tiffany's timeline is, but it's really important to get certain pieces of feedback before the new website gets etched in stone, the design, right? So, you know, do you have any idea what the timeline is? Because we talked about doing a lot of different things to make sure that the usability of the site is tested before things get too far down the line.
Yeah, it's just getting underway now. It's a bulk-to-bulk process.
Is it, is it following?
Do they have a project plan?
A project plan?
Yeah. Oh, Tiffany's listening in, but I, I don't, I don't have that in front of me.
I think that's a good suggestion though because, hi Tiffany.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Yes, we've kicked off our meeting with Civics Plus. And they have, I do have an outline and project timeline from them. We just kicked it off last week. We were in a waiting queue for our turn, so to speak. And our, the timeline is to launch around June, July, depending on our deliverables and how, how things go on our end and theirs. So right now, we, we're sort of in the, you know, information gathering point, pictures. And we have to give them certain feedback. And we have our homework assigned to us and then we'll meet with them again in March. And it will sort of be ongoing as we work, churn through the process. But she gave us a good overview, picture of how, sort of with our account, what we're entitled to and what this redesign process will look like. It's really not building from the ground up. It's more of a refresh and overlaying updates and some enhancements, some changes over what's already existing. Which is why I'm going through the exercise of cleaning up the backend of our website and going, meeting with each department head and deleting old material. And because that is something that Civics Plus won't be doing through this process. So the more tidy on our end that we have the information, you know, it'll enhance the end result. So I don't, hopefully that's a little bit of an update. We're just at the beginning process. I can get you more information. That's just off the top of my head right now.
So I think it would be helpful, Tiffany, maybe Susan, if we, we got another group meeting together to kind of review what it is you're going to be doing, Tiffany, so that we can make sure, to, you know, Anne's point, this is a project, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And we should be leveraging this process, right, to make sure the right input is collected in order to give it to Civics Plus.
Yeah. And we did discuss that at our meeting. We, we talked about different ideas that we had, you know, their capabilities with AI and user testing and heat mapping. And, you know, that wasn't something, that isn't something that they typically do in these refreshes that are more cyclical every three to four years. But it's certainly something that we could do on our own. But it's not something that they typically see different towns engage in as far as feedback during the process of, of this redesign. So I think most towns sort of gather, you know, over the past four years, we've gathered certain feedback from the community by, and internally too, with different departments and what their needs are and how their needs are changing for how they want to distribute their information on the website. So different factors at play. We definitely want the community's feedback. I feel like we, we've received some over the four years. That's been helpful, that we've sort of noted. I don't know. Yeah, that's, that's sort of what I, what I have right now.
I, I understand that, but we have, in front of us, a, a project plan with stages. And, and it's not just the community that.
Right.
Needs to be able to give you feedback, but, you know, figure out who the stakeholders are, where the decision makers are, yeah.
Yep. Well, we have an internal team and it's made up of, represents different departments that have, different department heads will be involved in reviewing as far as, you know, we know the, the most visited, we have analytics on it on what the most visited webpages are, the most downloaded webpages. We have, you know.
Frankly, it sounds as if it's your project.
Yeah, it's not my project. I mean, I am, I'm facilitating it. I'm part of a team working on it that's been assembled internally, which is how it worked the last time we did this forty years ago.
So Tiffany, I'll just offer the following perspective as someone who used to do this for a living, okay? The department heads will have the best intentions of making the website easy for the, they'll, they'll want to make it easy for the, for them to publish valuable information for the community. However, part of that website has to be for the community to easily access information. And, and we won't get the best possible outcome unless we engage the community in kind of testing out what we're thinking. So it's, 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 these, these websites that are kind of lots of different things to lots of different people are the most difficult ones to design well. So I would just encourage us to take this offline and, you know, talk about how to best make sure we get the different feedback from different perspectives and in the most efficient way.
I, we've sort of gone down a rat hole at this point.
Yes.
And I, I wanted to hear from John what your impression was of the meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Well, Susan was exactly right. When you started out and you had these five or six tables and you pass out this project plan process and you say, put it together, everybody goes down their own rat hole, so to speak, and decides, well, I worked on this project here and this is what I did. And everybody starts to be project specific, which was not the objective. It was to look at it from a higher, higher level and see what the story was. I thought everybody converged on that, but how many, how many minutes did you give us? Twenty?
Yeah.
All right. You know, wherever you drew the line, it didn't make any difference if you draw it a thirty or forty. Everybody hit together to understand what's going on. And the light goes on after everybody sees everybody else's stuff. I don't think the light goes on when you've got your little team and you say, this is what I put together. It doesn't. Because different people, different tables came to different conclusions. And a lot of it was driven by, well, who's the dominant person at the table and what's their project? And it kind of gets driven that way. But when they see everything and put it together, that kind of crystallized. And that's, that is a sheet that every team, when it's assembled or something, or at least a preliminary team, because you don't know who's gonna be involved in the end, should have. should have. And that's the first meeting and the first, you know, starting point for it. So, I thought it was a good exercise, but to your point, the big value is who are you and what department are you in or what committee? And kind of know what you do, et cetera. Very educational.
You know what the best part was, was at the end, and I'm not sure if you were there with Greg?
Not at the end, that was not.
Yeah, when we were handing out the actual piece that had the detail on it. Before we handed that out, somebody raised their hand and said, gee, it'd be really great if we had one of these all filled out with all the steps and the information in it. And it was, it was like the perfect setup because that's exactly what we wanted to do next step. So, yes, I think that was good. Thank you.
It's really just a common language so that when all the committees are working with each other, they're speaking in a common language and hopefully understanding where they are in the process.
So, thank you very much for that. You're very welcome. And like I said, I'm totally available. We can connect on next steps, see if you can talk.
I do think there's one next step we should talk about now and that is, because it was something we didn't talk about during the consent agenda, but we have an open action to kind of review the committees that we think may no longer need to exist or could be absorbed, merged, or reinstituted as advisory to staff members. We have those recommendations. I know Greg, you want to take a look at them. You know, we've even had some committee chairs come forward and say, you know, we really don't need this committee to exist right now. So, I think, I do think we need to have that discussion. And I know, you know, it's kind of related to the action here on the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee. If we can, you know, pick a meeting to have that discussion, I think we just need to get that done.
After you've talked to Greg.
We've kind of given him some information and I'm not quite sure, Greg, if you want to talk offline about it first before we bring it to the board, but I just think we've got to, there's nothing else that the project team is working on in that area. We just need to have a conversation. So, if you want to have a conversation first and then bring it to the board, whatever it is, we just have a conversation at the board, whatever makes sense, but we've got to get that done.
So, you'd like to have that when we, before we talk about civically and inclusion?
It's, yeah, so the reason that has been kind of held up is we wanted to discuss, what is our process for setting up a new committee, but also which committees have served their purpose and can stop existing. So, the generic conversation is what I'd like to have first and in addition to those specific committees where we do think they can take a different form.
So, that goes on an action?
Yeah, I mean, we have something for the March meeting, but I just want to make sure Greg is ready to have that conversation. We have a date of, you know, March 4th, we can do it. Then if that's a meeting date, if you want to do it before, I just, I just think we need to have it.
Let me reassemble those.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And I just hope you do it and thanks, Susan.
Yep.
Okay. I've got this policy.
Kind of read it, thank you.
It's, it's longer and longer if you add more and more conditions.
I think it covered everything.
Yeah. I think we took, we took some stuff out.
I tried.
But. I'm going to grab.
I move to advance the appointment policy to a second reading.
Second.
Good.
Becky, yes?
Yes.
Kathy, Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Okay.
I think I'll just keep it to the wayfinding task force meeting. And there's quite a good turnout for that. And Marlene Dolan is chair. We have Mark Faverman from MDI, who's the wayfinding organization. And we discussed objectives that the task force has been given and went over the first meeting, just talking about community branding, what it is, what it accomplishes, and just tried to help all the volunteer, the people on the committee understand that. So, Mark Faverman, quite a presentation. I think it was 220 slides. It was, well, his point was, he was trying to show everything from very simple to very large scale and how everything can, you don't apply everything to one place. Anyway, so our next meeting is going to be, let me write this down, March 5th. We've not specified a time yet, but the next meeting is going to be case studies from others, other communities.
Have you, has the committee considered following the project plan that the governance group has developed?
Well, now that we have it, suppose we can. I could mention that to Marlene. And that's.
Okay, great. Thank you for sitting through 230 slides.
Tell you what.
Kind of ironic, it's wayfinding. Can't get lost.
Actually, it was, it was really pretty interesting, I thought.
Brian?
Parks and Rec, nothing really new.
Did they get a report from the?
Yeah, I didn't tell them much. It was actually, it seems like there's a lot of everything they knew already. They're still waiting to find out if USA Pickleball will use Manchester as a case study. The costs are more than what a budget at this point, considering the fact that that $20,000 that was allotted to a town meeting, I think we're losing, off the top of my head, I forget how much money, almost half of that just to extend the fence, to raise the fence out. Okay. And then, of course, now we're just waiting for Greg to give us the credit card, show them that I'm going to Florida.
Check out some other examples.
Check out some other, someone, so at this point, it's, I think it's just going to be a phone on our side for a long time.
Have, has the Parks and Rec committee considered setting up a lock?
It was discussed. I don't think it's, it hasn't gone past the discussion, the initial discussions.
For the record, I am advocating that they restrict the courts to town residents, charge the residents something reasonable for.
For.
And that will at least cut down on the number of people in there and bring in a little bit of revenue.
Okay, that was, that was brought up and I will talk to Cheryl about putting that on the, this must agenda as well.
They could also get a, do the FOB at the library, you know, how they, depending on the hours.
Okay, right. So, you rent a FOB or check out a FOB, but.
That's a great idea.
But, well, the only problem with that is that it's the hours that the library.
Yeah.
Or town hall around.
I think it's something, it's certainly worth my initial reaction, the initial feeling I got from when I first brought this up after you and I talked about this two months ago. It was, wasn't well received. Okay. The, but it's certainly worth revisiting it.
What was the feedback?
It just that, you know, there's no other facility, no other town facility that limits those courts or, you know, but then again, this is the only one around. So, it's a unique situation and I think that it's like anything else, it's on China territory. And it just, there is, every day, there's more and more information coming out. Okay. And the reports are saying it's noisy.
And annoying too.
And annoying.
And all the same.
Pardon?
They're all the same, every report.
Every report's the same.
The articles in the media.
So, the interesting, you know, depending on if you did go with a FOB approach or something electronic, some electronic entry, you wouldn't know who's there. And if there was a particular complaint at a particular time.
Right.
You would know who's there. So, that.
That's fair. But I think that there are, it's, as long as it's being used, it's going to be complaints. Doesn't matter who's using it.
Understand, but some of it's anecdotal that now, you know, anything you can do electronically will provide you with actual data and evidence.
So, it's, again, it's something that we'll, you know, I'll have to bring back to them. And then the other thing to discuss was naming of Iron Street Field. So, that's still.
Iron Street Field's not good enough.
There's an opportunity.
It is an opportunity.
All right, so that was kicking that around, just what they wanted to, it's not what they want to. And they're getting ready for 4th of July already, so they're cranking that up. And basketball season's winding down, next weekend is the end of season championship weekend. And I think it was a successful, you know, Heather does a great job of that. And the after-school program is thriving. So, I guess Parks and Rec is doing their thing.
Would they like a harbor launch service?
What potential? If they get the infrastructure.
Speaking of, under the liaison report, I think I'll take advantage of that to discuss the launch service. Peter Twining and I took the action to help Bayonne with a business plan for that. So, we have done some work on that, met with Greg, have a couple of pages of assumptions working through that. Peter's working on some of the financials. I think he's away on vacation. When he gets back, then we'll have another meeting with Greg and Bayonne. So, that's actively a process. One of the things we kind of talked about though is doing a, let's walk before we run approach. We talked a lot about both harbor launch service and harbor tours. So, we're trying to concentrate on the launch. You know, can we make that successful? Yeah. Yeah. Can we make that, and that's what we discussed with Greg, you know, can we make that successful before we start getting too confused with too many different services? So, like I said, I think we'll be ready to come back, I mean, you know, early March. Yeah.
I think that the decision has to be made for Tom Baker's purpose.
Yeah, and we'll be talking with him too.
Well, I didn't tell him as he was going to get his.
He wouldn't get his money until after town meeting anyway, but he wants some sort of commitment, is my understanding. We would bring it to town, no, we would bring it to town meeting.
Bring it to town.
That was my understanding. Yeah. So, and I think we would be ready to, I think we need to discuss it at the select board as we're discussing all the other budgetary items. And then we would be able to let Tom know one way or another, are we bringing it to town meeting or not? I missed the FinCon meeting on DPW on Wednesday. I don't know if there's anything.
It's a good discussion. Most of the budgets were approved as presented. A little bit more discussion is needed concerning, you know, with all the capital investments on the horizon, how we best manage the OPM, the owner's project manager. So, you're required by state law to have an OPM for any project that's over 1.5 million in the horizontal project.
That dollar amount?
Vertical project.
That dollar amount, is that for the expected total cost or just for, like, let's say you're doing a design and it's less than a million dollars, does, do you still need an OPM for that design project or?
No, just for, that's for construction. And so, Chuck would, Chuck and me would be strongly in favor of bringing that in-house. And so, that's, that needs further discussion. So.
And you say bringing in-house, in other words, the management of that.
Higher, basically higher than in-house OPM rather than contracted that out.
But it would be a temporary hire.
Be a temporary hire.
Yeah.
Full-time, but term limited.
Correct. So, finance committee asked us to do a side-by-side comparison of that and have a little more discussion next time around.
Okay.
No, I'm going to save it.
The school committee meets tomorrow to decide upon their budget. They are still trying to meet the principals' desires and respond to Essex's financial constraints. I hope that they find a middle ground tomorrow. It's, we've talked about that list of things that Greg mentioned. As a package, if we could get the three entities to agree, that whole package, each entity has to give up something and each gets something or two things. But trying to deal with those subjects independently, you just, you just run into strong resistance from whoever is going to have to give up on that particular one. It's an interesting process. And the MBTA zoning, as of course, the consultant is doing a really good job of getting people to focus on actually how many units you could get in this area. And it, at the moment, we seem to be settling in on one area, starting at Elm Street, two houses in from Central, going out Elm Street and Powderhouse Lane, and then following the curve of Powderhouse Hill over to Pine Street and then a little bit up Pine Street, but not as far as Newport Park because Newport Park is deep restricted to be senior housing and doesn't fit the model. Then down both sides of Pine Street to two houses in from Central Street on the, on the east side and then down to the, to the gas station there on Pine Street. So, it avoids, it still needs to be refined a bit, but it avoids the historic district by and large. It's mostly areas with small lots and the advantage of a small lot is if you buy in, you can't put up a big building. So, that would, I think that Emily is modeling at two and a half stories and saying, we can get what we need inside the circle there. And then there are the two outside the circle possibilities that we're looking at, one of which is the doctor's building off of Pine Street and.
Off of Pine or School?
Ah, School, sorry. Yeah, correct, School. And possibly including the back.
Yep.
And those areas would be very dense. The other is that Danny Call has. The other is that Danny Hall has been talking with Gordon College, and if Gordon College could transfer its land to a, to a non-educational something or other, it might be possible to put together a deal where there would be 20 acres of fairly dense townhouses and the rest of the land would go into conservation.
Access by Pine Street?
Access from Pine Street, yes. And I haven't done it, but Sarah Malish and Steve Gang and some other people have watched and, and think that that is a plausible thing. It's just a question of getting, there are lots of moving pieces to get that one working because at the moment, it belongs to an educational institution and that means it's excluded and we can't, we can't build on some, we can't rezone education land owned by an educational institution. So that, that's, I don't, the committee is really focusing in on those areas. We looked at some others out Summer Street. There's the former, most recent former Cricket Building would be a lovely target, but it's too small. You can't do spot zoning. It has to be at least five acres. And the rest of that street just isn't really conducive to what we're trying to do.
Did they look at the two lots out Summer Street, just beyond the, beyond the train overpass? It's, you know, those two lots that equal a little over six acres?
That's outside the circle.
Okay.
The circle goes to about Lincoln, I think.
The circle goes to about Lincoln. And, and the goal is that the outside of the circle wants to be 20 acres because part of the whole formula is that you have to have one section that's 20 acres.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Thank you.
So that's what.
Okay.
Very hard to follow those meetings online because we all talk over each other.
Misery Islands.
What?
Misery Islands.
Oh, House Island is a little, even a little far. And Misery Island sadly belongs to.
Sorry. You could claim it, it's out of the sea.
And those are the two things that I'm following.
Okay. I've got a couple of things. For DPW, the fires of the moment are the library leaks. And they are getting some quotes, and it's really all around the chimney. And of course, once the water gets in, it starts walking. So that's why they've got problems in lots of different places. And apparently, it's been going on for quite some time. But they hope to be able to seal that off fairly soon. And the Stinky Beach Wall is having problems from the past couple of storms, even though it has recently been redone. They're trying to put some rocks, I think, in front of that to prevent, to at least break down the waves that are coming in, hitting that wall at high, at King Tides. And not in the fire department, but with regard to what's going on for their, their initiative on a new, on their new site that they're exploring up on where Black Earth used to be, they're going to take a look at geothermal, which is drilling a really deep hole and seeing if that might make some sense for them. I'm curious. Pardon me?
They're a private well.
Board of Health will try to get a hold of that somehow.
I don't think they do close, but maybe they do.
I don't.
They're close.
They got, yeah.
I don't think the Board of Health is involved in closing.
No, no. That's correct, because this will be a close. But they got it at like, I don't know, 1,000 feet or something. And they're not going down to lava. But I guess it's kind of warm down there in the heat sink with rocks. So I was curious about that. So we'll, we'll see, we'll see what happens with that. The other area is the Historic District Commission had a meeting late last month. There's a consultant that's working with the commission. His name is John Clemmons. And he's doing a survey plan of all the historic houses in town, or at least those that currently are, are listed on the local historic district or the national register. And they will, he will expand beyond that. But the purpose of this survey is to set, set up a roadmap for an application for grants to base, to survey the town in a greater sense and some of these properties that have already been looked at to provide more information so it, it can provide the town an ability or knowledge of what, what town, what, what houses, sites, and structures should be preserved. And he's got about, I'd say, 200 to 250 properties that are listed, and he's divided it up into about seven neighborhoods. Pretty interesting. And all of these houses generally are dating from 1750. They're all older houses. And certainly, I think it's the lion's share of the historical houses. But there are certainly more that are beyond that. So this is just a preliminary list. And his report isn't due until the 1st of June or so, so he's continuing to push along. But it's a good, a good guide as to where things are going, you know, where, where the houses are and what's significant here. And.
Will that be put online?
Yes. I think, I think when the survey is complete, I have the preliminary survey, which is, I don't know how many pages. It looks like, I don't know, probably 15 or 20. So he's got more work that he's got to do in his, his effort. But it'll be used as background for, for the grants. And then we'll have a real good profile for, for the town, for all of that. So that'll be going on for the next several months. And I think that's, yeah, those two issues are good.
Can I finish with your quote, I think it's next?
Yes, can be very brief. Just sort of FYI, we rarely see this, but Grand Lake Pond is more than maxed out in terms of what it can hold and water is spilling over the spillways, which is not a typical scene. I think December, it's like seven issues of rain in December.
Where does that spill?
Sort of towards Round Pond.
Oh, okay. All right, over on that side.
Yeah. Yep. So also with all the high water in the, high water table in the ground, it means a lot of extra water is getting into the sewer system, which is not something we want. So even though we may be able to get progress on infiltration, inflow, when it's this, when there's this much water, you see a lot of it at the sewer pipe. So more work to be done there. Mentioned the ATM, April 24th, and then also the deadline for petition articles, which is February 22nd. And then I just highlighted the new select board handbook is available online and gave you that link. So I'm encouraged you to take a look and when you can't sleep, have some ice cream.
Is that something we could, I, I know that it's online, but provide it as a.
Printed.
Printout to new select board members when they, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we have in the past.
Right. As I've had, yeah.
Yes. So, my quick updates.
Okay. In that case, who is it who's supposed to go in? Oh, me, okay. I move that the select board enter into executive session for Chapter 38, Section 21A6 to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and to not return to open session. And I do declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy? Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay. We can turn off.